Good evening, welcome to the Village Board Meeting, the Village of Pleasantville. Today is Monday, May 9, 2011, so if you are watching live on Monday, May 9, 2011, we encourage you to call in if you have comments or questions. Our call-in number is (769) 1677. As always, you can watch us live on Verizon or Cablevision or at PCTV76.org where you can also pick up board meetings later with an on-demand webcast. Our next scheduled meeting is a work session on Monday, May 16 at 7:00 p.m., and our next regular meeting is Monday, May 23 at 8:00 p.m. with a work session at 7:00. A bunch of things to report today in the category of announcements. The first is that today, Monday, May 9, was a big day in the Village of Pleasantville because we completed the closing of the village's purchase of the Lane Plumbing property which is behind the post office. Many of you who watch our meetings regularly are aware that we've been in contract to buy the Lane Plumbing property for a while. The closing was delayed for a little while with some due diligence issues, but all of them got cleared, and today was the day that title was handed over to the Village of Pleasantville. And a couple of things to report about that. The first is that the Lane family is a family that goes back generations in the Village of Pleasantville. In fact, somewhere thereover, Patty's head is Charles Lane, who was, at the time, one of the first, I think, at that point it was still called the President of the Village instead of the Mayor. And the Lane family has roots in this village, and I think they go back even before the founding of the village. So, they have owned that property for something like 65 years. It's been a linchpin of the village commercial base for a good long while, and to have it end up in village hands with public purpose, I think, is a fitting transition from the Lanes to the Village of Pleasantville. And so, thanks very much to the entire Lane family, led by the matriarch, Alice Lane, vigorous as always, and the entire Lane family. So, we anticipate that within the next couple of months, the buildings that are on that site will be demolished, the grade will be flattened out, and we'll be installing a parking lot back there. It will be a relatively modest improvement because we anticipate that there may be a higher and better use for that property at some point in the longer future, but in the near term, it's going to provide a new source of parking in the downtown area, and in addition to that, I think it's going to create better circulation, which will very possibly make it possible for you to get through from the Bedford roadside through Cooley Street and out again to Manville. So, that's not a promise yet on that. It's something we are looking at carefully, but we now own, for the first time, a contiguous row of properties that would allow that to happen. So, good news on that front, and you will be seeing progress on that very soon. Monday, May 30 is the annual Memorial Day celebration, and I encourage anybody who is around on Memorial Day to participate in that. There's a parade that begins at 10:00 a.m. at BRS and makes its way down to Memorial Plaza where there are ceremonies and comments about those we have lost and those who are memorialized on the monuments down at Memorial Plaza. And so, I strongly encourage you to come if you possibly can. It's a nice, appropriate, and quite special day in the Village of Pleasantville that's been going on for decades in a rather similar form, which is a nice bit of continuity. I also wanted to mention that we have a work session on Monday, June 6, which is an annual event with our colleagues at the Town of Newcastle Board. We have a joint work session regarding our joint ownership of the water filtration plant. For those of you who may not know, the village owns a portion of the water filtration plant in Millwood, and the water we get in the Village of Pleasantville water system comes from that filtration plant. So, because we have joint ownership, we meet annually with the Town of Newcastle Board to talk about the capital needs and the operations and the good news and challenges that we confront in the coming year, and that will be happening on Monday, June 6. It alternates back and forth between the Village of Pleasantville and the Town of Newcastle. This year, it's at our place. Am I right, Patty? It's here?
Yes, it'll be here, 7:00 on the 6th.
I remember being here.
Well, here is your chance.
Yes.
A couple of other happy things to report, and the first is that we benefited greatly the other day by the efforts of the Girl Scouts. I guess it was last weekend, a team of Girl Scouts spent quite a bit of time cleaning up in the Memorial Plaza area and down at the train station along Washington Avenue on both sides of the street up to the firehouse. They worked on Manville Road up to Great Oak Lane and then came back down Bedford all the way to the gazebo. So, Jean Marie Vedovino was one of the parent leaders involved in that venture. Thanks very much to her and her crew of Girl Scouts who did a great job. We are much appreciative. I think we'd be happy to have you back anytime you want. And Jean Marie commented that the girls were all enthusiastic about using the little grabbers that we offered them from DPW to pick up litter. So, those are available for any volunteer who would like to borrow one. We'd be more than happy to have you do it, and the Girl Scouts have set a great example for that bit of volunteerism. The other thing I wanted to mention is that a week ago Friday was the Relay for Life on behalf of the American Cancer Society. That's been an annual event for some years at Pace University, and I was invited over there and participated in the opening ceremonies of the Relay for Life in the Pace Gym. There were 500 or more Pace students there, as well as a whole bunch of other people and quite a number of people from our community, including the Pleasantville Lions Club, which participated in providing a dinner for cancer survivors who were participants in that. I think the whole event raised about $50,000, and it was really a great event and a moment when the Pace community and the Pleasantville community put their collective shoulders behind the wheel and did a good thing for the community. So, it was a happy event, and I thank Pace not only for including us in it, but I thank the Pace community for inviting so and welcoming so warmly the members of the Village of Pleasantville who participated. Anybody else have anything to?
The park, Roselle.
Oh, well, go ahead.
We also benefited from our neighbors over by Roselle and away from the Roselle area. We received a grant from the state for playground equipment, and it was a very, they had, we had to remove equipment from the Roselle park because it was rotted and unsafe, and the group of parents there wanted new equipment, but we couldn't afford new equipment. We got a grant, they said, "We'll install it," and they got, how many volunteers were there?
Gosh, there must have been 25 or so.
Yes, and they put in the playground equipment, and they worked under the bid that we had given them, that we got from the state, and it's a beautiful playground there now, so I think it's to serve as three- to seven-year-old, three to seven, three to eight-years-old. Yeah, they did a great job.
It was really a very nice event and worth a shout-out also to ShopRite, which volunteered to provide food for the crew and actually put up a little tent and--
Right, and scrunchie was there.
Is it scrunchie? I was going to say scruffy, I guess.
Maybe it was scruffy. Scruffy or scrunchie is the ShopRite there or dog? What is it? I have no idea what it was.
Whatever it is, thanks very much, not only to all those people in the neighborhood who helped in, I guess it's the 21st century equivalent of a barn raising, but also to some of those local vendors like ShopRite.
It's the third playground, the third community-built playground.
We had at least--
They're not quite good at it, yes.
At least a couple of neighbors come by who are, I'm sad to say, in my age group, and a couple of them said, "Three times was enough."
Right.
The younger people can do it this time.
Letting the younger folk do it. It's pretty sad.
Was there anything else anybody wanted to report tonight? All right, then we'll move on. We had a couple of things to do tonight, and the first is, we have a group here tonight from the Pleasantville International Association, so let me just go over to the podium for this purpose. The Pleasantville International Association is an organization that's been around in Pleasantville for, I don't know, 40 years, something like that. Am I about right on getting a nod there? It's an organization that has been a loose alliance of parents and kids who are interested in traveling overseas, frequently traveling overseas in the summer, every now and again traveling overseas for a semester during the regular school year, and also on some occasions being a host family here in Pleasantville for kids overseas who might want to come back here. And it has been an extraordinary thing. I can speak to that from my own personal experience, my daughter having been a participant some years back in a trip to Costa Rica, which she continues to recall as really one of the great moments of her high school career, and continues to be Facebook friends with the other kids from around the United States and in a couple of cases around the world who were participants on that particular trip. PIA runs a series of fundraising events annually to help underwrite the cost of these students going abroad, and in fact, I think one is coming up now, the date for the, there's a house and garden tour, am I right, coming up?
It's canceled this year.
The house and garden tour got canceled this year, so keep an eye out. But on an annual basis, we'd like to invite these kids to come here to the village board for a couple of reasons, and one is, it is really an act, it's not overstating it to say that it's an act of courage to go marching out from this little community and jump on a plane and head overseas to a foreign land and live with, in many cases, live with another family for a period of time. Sometimes families where there's a language barrier and kids are struggling in order to catch up, and at the same time, an act of real generosity because many of these projects also include an effort to build something or participate in an improvement for the local community in whatever country it is. And I've come to think of the kids as our version of the Pleasantville State Department. There are ambassadors at large heading out across the country and representing Pleasantville in such a remarkably good way, and I certainly recall from my daughter's experience and from conversations I've had with lots of kids from PIA in the past, that there is frequently lots of discussion about what life is like at Pleasantville High School and what it's like to grow up in the United States and to grow up in a place like Pleasantville, and likewise, lots of stories brought back about what it's like to live in some of these other countries, in some cases, foreign countries that are more similar to ours, and in some cases, kids who are living for a period of time in countries where life is really completely and fundamentally different from the way it is right here. So, my purpose on an annual basis in inviting you all to come here is to appoint you as ambassadors of the Village of Pleasantville. It's a one-night opportunity where I take on the role of Secretary of State of the Village of Pleasantville, a role I occupy just because I say so, and I don't get too many opportunities to do that, so why not? So, we have a couple of things we'd like to hand to each of you, and they have two things in mind. The first is a Pleasantville hat, and so I'm hoping, just like the Stu Leonard's bag, you know, the pictures of people all around the world, that you're going to come back with a picture of you wearing this Pleasantville hat in some faraway iconic place in whatever country you are going to. And then the other thing I have to hand you is a small set of vintage postcards of the Village of Pleasantville, images of how Pleasantville looked a good long while ago, and so you'll have a choice there as you show these to your new family in the foreign land, and you can tell them, "This is just the way Pleasantville looks right now," or you could be honest and say, "This is how Pleasantville looked 75 and 100 years ago." But that will be a choice for you, and the choice is, do you leave that as a house gift for the family that takes you in, or do you write it out with great care and send it back to your parents to tell you what's going on with your lives? So, with that, I just want to say that on behalf of the Board and on behalf of the village, we have so much respect for what you all do and so much respect for the kids who have done this in the past and on whose shoulders you stand, and so much respect for the parents and the family members and the community members that have made PIA a going proposition for so long. And, you know, again, I think I can speak personally that it was PIA that encouraged my daughter to go to Costa Rica. I don't think it's a plan she would have hatched in a vacuum, and so it's just one of the many examples of the way this village creates an environment that gives our kids opportunities to spread their wings and fly, and in this case, fly away from us, but come back soon. So, let me just invite each of you up. I hope I get everybody's name right. Sarah Delapuce is going to Morocco. Sarah here tonight? Come on up. Thank you very much. Delapuka, okay. There's your hat, there's your postcard. Richard Hunter, I see him right there, headed to Spain. Did your brother go to Spain?
Yeah.
I recall interviewing your brother on PCTV when he came back, and in the course of the conversation, we were talking about food and what was the great thing about food in each of these countries, and I think he said the great thing was Turkish food, so.
But he went to Spain.
Exactly. There you go. Pleasantville, New York. Thank you, Richard. Eden Nagilski going to Costa Rica. Thank you so much. You're headed my daughter's footsteps a few years later. Amanda Seijojos headed to Scotland. Are you a double-dipper? Were you traveling last year? Was it Spain?
France.
France, two years in a row. Will we see you next year? Are you graduating?
I'm graduating.
You can be red-shirted for another year of Village of Pleasantville. Julie Sandusky going to Belize. Thank you, Julie. Dana Stopler, New Zealand, other side of the earth. Thank you, Dana. Nicole Tumonge going to Botswana. That's a long way. And Amy Walsh going to Australia. Have I missed anybody? Did I get everybody? Good. Let me just mention the group that was here last year and then went off and came back so successfully. Yvonne Huang went to Chile, Sarah Brown to Spain, Claudia Finn to New Zealand, Sam Sullivan to Ghana, Amanda, who we just saw, France last year, and this year, Scotland, Natalie Ware went to Germany, and Mikey Elliott went to Poland. So, again, a great, long tradition. Keep it going. I think it's clear that PIA and the PIA tradition is in good hands, and this year's crop of ambassadors at large will serve the village well. So, thank you so much.
And if any of your host family want to buy the rec center when you see that, just give them that card and tell them to follow us. It looks better in that photo.
So, I free you to leave if you wish, but the exciting wheels of civic life are about to churn, so we won't be offended.
Go while you can. That's great. I'm very brave.
Our next order of business tonight is we have a public hearing on a local law amending Chapter 185 zoning, Section 18520, Central Business District, A2 district. Is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Hi. How do you want to describe the proposed amendment to local law?
Sure, this is rather simple on its face. It is an amendment to, as the mayor said, Central Business District A2 zoning, which affects the area we call the Old Village. What we're proposing is to add some language to a particular schedule that affects hours of operation under principal permitted uses. The proposal is to have the zoning amended as follows. A structure or building may not, I'm sorry, a structure or building may be erected, altered, arranged, designed, or uses and a lot premises may be used for any of the following purposes and for no other. The section that is under consideration for revision is Section 1, which states, "Retail stores and banks and bakeries, delicatessens and ice cream parlors with a maximum of eight seats for customer use, provided their hours of operation are no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m.," the new language being those hours of operation to be in effect for certain businesses in the A2 district.
So, this discussion is, this proposed local law is a result of actually quite some years of discussion with neighbors in the Old Village district, the A2 district being comprising just the commercial area in the Old Village. It's, I think, unique in the Village of Pleasantville in that it is surrounded entirely at quite close range by residential uses, and at various points in time, there have been conflicts that are inevitable when residences and commercial uses are abutting one another so closely, and so we are considering this local law that would limit those retail uses, as Patty described, to the hours of 6:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. The current law does not limit the hours of activity at all. So, if there's anybody who would like to add any comment to this, you're welcome to come and speak. Just give us your name and address and let us know what you think. Anybody? Welcome. Yeah?
I know you're so shy.
Peter Allen, 60 Broadway.
Do it from the mic there so people at home can catch you as well.
Am I addressing you people?
Yeah.
You're addressing the world through PCTV76.org.
And PCT's--
Peter Allen, 60 Broadway, Pleasantville. I've lived here since '87 in the Old Village. I'm just up the street from where all the main commercial areas. The A2 area is residential as well as business, as you mentioned, and it's important that we respect both parties, and we've tried to keep a balance in our area where we have a vibrant retail operation, where we have restaurants, and we can, you know, do some kind of retail operation. But we also have to worry about the fact that we have a lot of families, children, and it is heavily densely residential, and we like to preserve that character. Right now, this is not a heavily trafficked area late at night. There's one bar that's open late, but that's it, and we've had some problems with that, and we try to maintain that where it's at a low key, but basically, after a certain hour, 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night, it gets very quiet there, and we all like that. That's why we live there. We want to preserve that, just like the postcards. We want to keep as much of that as we can, okay? The Old Village is under lots of pressure from extra traffic, extra parking during the day and early evening. We don't need to exacerbate this. We've had a lot of variances for extra parking as new businesses come in, and it's getting much more congested. Those people who live there, my neighbors, and most of you, I'm sure, know that the traffic can be a problem. It's noisy, and we have some goals that we would like to keep kind of in front of us, okay? We want to reduce the noise, the lighting, and the traffic. These are reasonable goals for preserving the Old Village, okay? We don't need any more late-night operations. Increased loitering, potential underage drinking, late-night operations such as 24/7 convenience stores just aren't in the character and nature of where we live, and it serves no purpose. We don't need them. There are plenty of them at other areas which are zoned correctly for that kind of a business in more industrial or commercial areas, but we don't need to expand that to the Old Village. We've documented to the Board that in the '90s when we did the zoning update, the zoning ZTF, the zoning task force urged this. The things we're proposing now were urged in the '90s by the zoning task force. It was recommended by the zoning task force, and it was changed by a consultant at the last minute. So, this is not a new idea that we're just bringing to the Board's attention. It's been around since 1990s, and it was never implemented as we feel it should have been, but I think this is a good time to correct that, and we're glad that you're interested in helping us to do that. We want to make sure the property values don't go down as well, and as you make it more of a commercial area, you have to worry about the fact that our homes and our investments will in fact be worth less. To summarize it, from my point of view, I don't want the Old Village to become Marble Avenue, okay? Every parking variance, late-night operation, increased retail traffic that the Board allows changes the character of our neighborhood, and we all like living there, we like being in Pleasantville, and we want to preserve that. And I think this is a simple change. We've also documented that there are no real retail operations save the bar that stay open late at night right now. There's a nail salon, you know, a deli, but they all close early in the evening or by 6:00 o'clock. So, there's no need to preserve late-night operations because there's no history of it, okay? And I think these are very, very clear and simple points, and I'm backed by my neighbors. We've sent some petitions to Patty about this, and I think that pretty much summarizes what I have to say.
Jennifer Fraley, 36 Broadway. I've lived in the Old Village 23 years. One of the reasons I moved there was I liked that there was this nice meshing of the business and the residential, and I would really, really be upset if at this point it changed. It's really been a give-and-take. We all go to the restaurants, we go to the bars, you know, it's just a really nice, almost European flair, and we really don't need a 24-hour convenience store. If somebody is dying to get milk at 2:00 a.m., there's, you know, going to be a Walgreens down the street that's going to be open, there's the mobile mini-mart, there's the 7-Eleven, there's the store right here. You don't have to travel far to find that in a commercial area. We are a residential mixed with commercial. It's not an area that can support it from the neighbors necessarily, and so then we're going to have people driving in when there's no one there. You know, there are going to be lights, there are going to be deliveries. It's going to change the whole character of the village. We have our property values that have already been attacked by Con Ed and by all the changes that have been going on, and we just are a nice, we're kind of spread out, but we're a nice little group, you know? There aren't a lot of block parties, but we know each other, we see each other. We've been brought together by fighting this, so it would really be nice to keep it a nice character Old Village, is what it was started with. When I moved there, I remember there were lots of meetings to talk about, you know, keeping the character. We have a historic overlay. We're supposed to pay attention to what our houses look like. I don't think in the 1800s there was a 24-hour convenience store. Thank you.
Claire Schiffman, 197 Broadway. I actually don't live close enough to be strongly affected by the noise or the traffic. I'm a little bit further down Broadway, maybe a quarter of a mile from the Old Village. I just like getting to get to all these people to have a good fight, so that's why I'm here.
We could foment that. May, so.
So, I think the point of view of the people who really live within sight and hearing distance of this proposed 24-hour store is pretty clear. I do not, but I can say as a nearby resident, I make use of the commercial, the retail aspect of the Old Village, you know, probably more than the restaurant and restaurants there, because I, you know, I buy my last-minute milk and eggs at the little marts at the gas stations, but I've never needed to do that after 8:00 o'clock at night. You know, I get it 7:00 in the morning, or I get it 8:00 o'clock at night, but if I really were, you know, inclined to go out and buy some groceries at midnight, I would just get in my car and I would drive to the 7-Eleven or to the corner of Marble Avenue at the mobile station, though I do think probably my property values would be affected by a downgrading of that neighborhood. But that's not why I'm here. I'm here because I think the neighborhood doesn't need it. It's really what I want to say. As somebody who lives nearby and appreciates conveniences as much as the next person, it doesn't seem necessary to me, and I don't see a great personal problem for myself by having a 24-hour store there, but I don't, I do see it for my neighbors and my friends, and I don't think we need it. It just, it doesn't seem necessary. So, if it's a, you know, if we can keep that commercial district as a little bit different from the others in the town, it's a tiny town, you can get wherever you need if you need something late at night. That's all. Thank you.
Bea Farley, Charles Lane. I'm actually on the other side of town, and I came because, to me, when I think of the Old Village, I think of the Old Village. I think of the fact that we are a historic town with historic places, and to imagine having a change, even if we just start it now, you know, things snowball. You make one change, it's not hard to have other changes, and I just want to maintain the integrity of that historic part because the village changed in 15 years that I've been here, in many ways for the good, and I'd like to maintain that beauty that we see when we go into the old parts of the town. So, even though it won't affect me, I'm way on the other side of town, as small as the town is. I think it's important for all people in the village to know that we appreciate the historic sites here and the historic feel of a small village like Pleasantville.
Thank you.
Bjorn Schellenberg, 107 Bedford Road. We've been here since 1984. We came to the Old Village knowing that we were buying a house on a busy street. We would have preferred to have a house on a quieter street, but for whatever reason, we decided on this house that is on a busy street, and so we accept certain drawbacks that come with this. I've been at many meetings over the years since 1984 where the local residents of the Old Village-- Old Village have opposed all kinds of things. I remember opposition to a liquor license for Amon Jare, and now many of us are frequent guests at Amon Jare and love the ability to have a glass of wine there. I remember there was an opposition against paving, against removing the concrete and replacing it with asphalt on Bedford Road, and I think in hindsight, we think it was probably a good idea. So we have a little bit of a history of opposing change, just because we don't like change. I think the way to put, for me to put this particular restriction in perspective is we didn't think that we needed a law change originally. What we wanted to prevent, or what personally my wife and I wanted to prevent, is what happens at the very tail end of the night when Michael's closes. For people who've been there, well, most of you probably wouldn't be, it's usually 3:00 a.m., and the last revelers leave and go to their cars, and very often there are arguments, sometimes loud arguments, and sometimes breakage of glass, and sometimes breakage of my fence, rather frequently, I would say. Every few weeks or so, there's an incident like that. And our fear is really primarily the selling of liquor after Michael is closing. We could see a significant increase in street vandalism, noise, glass breakage, and all kinds of unpleasant consequences. It's strange that a law change is needed to combat that, but we tried all the other avenues through the zoning board, so I think this is our best option, and if this could go through, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to skip?
Sure. Scott Vernon.
You, Vernon.
Keith Bosberg, 204 Edgewood Avenue. I also live on the other side of town. Used to live at 30 Broadway. I don't see this as strictly a local issue for the residents of the Old Village. I love walking through the Old Village. It's where we began. It's Clark's Corners, and it's part of our special character overlay district. I'm more interested now to know, has this undergone a challenge? Will it go through a challenge? Is the gas station going to challenge this?
You mean a legal challenge to this proposal? I mean, that would be speculative. I mean, the law that we propose right now is not aimed specifically at the gas station. It's a law that would cover all the commercial properties in the Old Village. Obviously, we've had legal advice through this process as well, so I think the fact that you see it on our agenda is indication of the fact that we believe we have the right to do this if we vote to do it.
All right, Peter.
I'll buy that. Just that we were all quite disappointed a couple of months ago. We all got here, and we felt when we had to make a change, they proposed a change for a convenience store, that the gas station would go down. And now we have the, before us, our worst fears, that a 24-hour operation was going to be established in the Old Village, and we're still going to be having a gas station. And they're going to be coming back with a cartport again, you know? So I've been involved with all these issues.
The issue you're referring to, for those who may be watching and don't realize it, is that there are two gas stations in the Old Village on diagonal corners, and those are both uses that are not permitted under the current zoning in the Old Village. They are grandfathered noncompliant uses, so you couldn't build a new gas station on a commercial site in the Old Village, and if either of those two uses were to disappear for a year or more, they couldn't be revived. And what Skip is referring to, I think, is the question that was addressed at zoning, and that was the question of whether a proposed change in any aspect of a gas station, of the gas station property, would require that the gas station use expire. But I just want to say that isn't a matter that was a village board matter. That's a zoning board matter, and they also had legal counsel through the village council, so that went where it went.
Okay, so this is still good intentions, and I have certainly approved of it.
Right.
Again, the Old Village is a beautiful place. When I walk at night, my dog, my wife, by myself, I don't choose to go by 7-Eleven. I purposely pick the Old Village. Walk up Manville, down, back down Bedford Road. It's a beautiful stretch. Please preserve it that way. Thank you.
Thanks.
Hello. My name is Merrill Richmond. I live at 54 Hayes Hill. I think it's very important for the village to enact this change. I think it sends to very important, sets a direction, frankly, to public safety, to planning, to zoning, and any other commissions that serve the village. First, it helps preserve the very special character and historical overlay of the Old Village, and most importantly, I think it helps, and this comes from sitting in on a number of these meetings over the last several months, I think this change helps set apart the board's intentions for the A2 district from the A1 district. When I've sat in these meetings, listened to various commissioners talk about the Old Village, it seems that they often blur the distinctions between the A1 central business district and the A2 central business district. So I think this hour change is a very significant act, and I very much encourage you to move forward with it. I would also like to see this as sort of a first step. I think that distinction needs to be made even clearer. I think a change from the name, central business, A2, to something like neighborhood business would further guide the planning commission, the zoning commission, public safety, and others on this unique character that you described quite correctly. But this is a first step. It's years in the making, as has been pointed out. This has been going on for many years before we moved here, seven years ago, and we applaud the village for acting, bringing it to this point now, and hope you do move forward with it. Thank you.
And thanks for that suggestion. I do think the idea of changing the title makes sense to sort of better capture what was intended in. And also, for the record, as was mentioned by a couple of people, we've also received a number of petitions as well as a detailed explication of the hours of use, the hours of the businesses that exist right now, and to our knowledge, none of the businesses affected by this change in the law would be, would have their hours curtailed as it stands right now. Anybody else want to add thoughts? Hello, Helen?
Good evening. Helen Mura, 3 Hayes Hill Road. I don't have much to add. I just figure, having come to all these meetings, it's worth having your name on record that you attend them, and that I've lived in the Old Village since, I think, 99, and I prefer to see the gateway to where I live as a kind of a quieter area up behind Michael's and so on. I would not really enjoy having a 24-hour convenience store on the corner. I think the kind of neon suggestion of those kind of stores and the traffic and the trucks and the people who go there would change certainly the noise level, but also the character. I think we have an opportunity to keep it a sort of mixed residential/commercial and maybe even improve it along the way. We could do with some trees in the Old Village. And somebody mentioned earlier the European side of it. I think one thing that Amon Jare and Michael's have brought to that corner is this ability to sit outside on a fairly wide pavement and enjoy a meal on nice summer evenings, and I think adjacent to that with cars coming and going to a convenience store would be slightly less enjoyable. So I just want to say, you know, whatever you can do to preserve the current character, if not improve it, would be a good way to go. Thank you.
And I just want to make clear, for those who may be watching and be not familiar with this, is the issue we confront here is not about a convenience store, no convenience store. It's about hours of operation that would affect all of these retail businesses that are described as the permitted uses, so... Any further comment? Anybody want to add anything?
Is there anybody else in the audience? I'd just like to add to what has been mentioned here and in some of the other commission meetings. I was on the planning board for 13 years. I was also on that zoning task force and spent quite a few evenings with Austin Camprell and Mike Testa and others, looking at questions and issues about how things could or should be changed within the village in zoning in different areas. And both my experience on the planning board and from that, to me, what I took away from it was there are always a lot of concerns in the Old Village, for all the reasons that you and others have mentioned this evening. It's a very tightly knit commercial and residential area, and it needs to be handled very carefully so that the commercial development does not negatively impact the residential development, but serves its purpose as a neighborhood commercial area and also benefits from, obviously, from outside patronage as well, because Broadway comes through and Bedford Road comes through, and they're major arterials, and they bring a lot of pass-by customers to those locations within the Old Village where either food or delis or gas or other services are available. And I think that, having heard from you all, not just this evening, but sitting in on the zoning board meeting where this was discussed, just reinforced something that I've heard for many, many years in several different, wearing several different hats. And I would underscore what Peter said earlier, that this, and in my experience, this is not about a convenience store or a gas station so much as, in my experience, these issues come up constantly in the Old Village. It should come up. It makes a lot of sense for it to come up. It makes a lot of sense for it to be looked at, especially because of the nature of this community and this tightly knit area. There are several things that has been brought to our attention, and the idea of renaming the zone to neighborhood business zone is certainly an interesting one, and that I think I heard in previous discussions as well, and I think that's an excellent suggestion. There were a few things that the planning board brought up that had us a little bit concerned with regard to the way the limitation on hours were worded. It's currently tagged to specific grouping of uses under principle, and the planning board raised the issue that this might lead to accessory uses not being controlled by the time limitation. And the example was brought up of some other businesses around town where the retail component of their business is considered accessory. For instance, sales of wines at Prospero's may not be the principal use, may be an accessory use to the production of those wines on site. So I think we need to be a little bit careful and do this right the first time. I'd hate to see us move ahead with everybody feeling that we'd achieved something that was of great value to the community, and then in one of its first applications find out, oh, we didn't think about that aspect of it. I would like to suggest that we refer to several comments that we got from the planning board and also the idea about renaming the zone back to our attorney to look at, to make sure that this wording is the right wording, that it captures what we want to capture, and that we don't, we aren't inadvertently leaving loopholes here that, to make us all feel good and rush it through tonight, I would suggest that we adjourn this hearing to our next available public evening and just have these comments checked to make sure that we've got this thing covered and covered well.
I was under the impression, I'm sorry, I appreciate those comments, and I was kind of agreeing with you before, but I was under the impression that this is what our attorney suggested us to do and how to word it. That's why it's here now, like it is. Patty, am I correct?
I don't know who drafted the text amendment.
It did come from the village attorney.
I think it was referred to our council.
Well, the council developed it. However, I think Steve makes a reasonable point, which is, in the course of vetting it, especially through the comments at planning, that question has been raised, and it might be worth capturing it.
But I, you know, not to, after reading the planning commission's minutes, they, you know, there was a lot going on at that meeting, and there was, I think they got a bit off track considering all the other things that were going on down there in the Old Village at the time, and I think that they lost a little bit of sight of the issue at hand here, and that issue was that we're merely changing, and that was the issue we sent to our attorney, was that we were merely addressing the hours of retail stores. That was it. And I think that opinion came back very clear, and I'm very comfortable with that.
This achieves that.
Yes, it does.
The question planning raised that Steve commented on is the notion of accessory uses.
Right.
And then it raises the question of what on a given property gets identified as the principal use.
And that's what I think got convoluted in the planning commission's.
And what gets identified as the accessory use. Am I right, Steve?
I think so, and I understand where you're going to bring it. I don't think that this, that if we took a second look at this, and in my experience, boy, things get sent back to attorneys multiple times to try and get things perfectly straight. It's certainly happened with our purchase of the property over here and with many other things. I think it's worth just being a little reticent and making sure that the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed on this so that we don't find ourselves in a situation where somebody comes in and says, well, that use that you, which may have been one of the uses that you're interested in controlling, we're going to call it an accessory use and duck under the bar, or another question was raised, is that some of the uses that weren't included, potentially laundromats and other uses, you know, maybe those should really be considered as well. I'm not sure.
Well, except that these uses are the uses that are permitted in the Old Village.
In that section, yeah, in that section. That's why we're adjusting that section.
Well, Mike Testa went on to discuss a number of other uses that are allowed within the district. Professional governmental offices, quick printing establishment, answering agencies, personal service stores, such as, but not limited to barber shops, beauty salons, shoe repairs, tailor shops, we're not including tattoo.
We have a beauty salon down there.
Laundries, printing establishments. So, you know, we're looking at these other uses as well, and I think we should just really think carefully about if any of these other uses might be, might be potentially problematic in the future as well. And he goes on to talk about accessory uses and uses such special permits as separate types of issues.
He said special permits were not addressed in this, and don't have to be.
So Patty, if we were to want to address the question of accessory uses, we could adjourn this public hearing but leave it open while we pursue that, is that...
You can. You'd have to renotice, but you can handle it one of two ways. You could renotice if, in fact, you don't feel that this is going to adequately cover any exposure we may have if an accessory use operates beyond these particular hours. And I would advise that you do that.
Say that again.
It sounds like a legitimate concern. I don't want to have a law that only goes, you know, halfway down the path if you're looking to establish some sort of prohibited activity. It should be for the permitted uses and accessory uses within that particular zone. You can enact this and then just put another law in front of you to cover accessory uses if you want to take it in two steps. It's fine. But you can't expand this without renoticing it. So we can expand it, we can pass this and expand it later. You can pass this and then introduce another law to cover, if you'd like, any open issues you think may remain. It just depends. You can take a baby step, or you could wait and take a full giant step in a couple of weeks. We could renotice it.
Was this law, only because I've seen the way that this has happened with our businesses in the past, did we send this to the businesses in the business district? Do they know that? Have we directly given it to the nine or 10 businesses that are there so that they know that this is up for discussion? Because I've seen this happen before where they are, the residents are completely tuned into what's going on, the businesses are not, until we do something, and then, you know, they storm the bush deal afterwards.
No, your only notice requirements are for...
I know what our notice requirements are.
I can tell you that...
I just want to know if the businesses know that this is afoot, because...
The proposed local law, the gist of the proposed local law was distributed to the entire Chamber of Commerce mailing list by the Chamber of Commerce, I know. Whether all of those businesses in the Old Village are members of the chamber, I don't know.
And that's really, you know, they do that as a consequence of their just adv...
And that's really, you know, they do that as a consequence of their just advocacy, but we don't have an obligation to, nor do we ever notice, I mean, unless they're property owners.
Look, I know we don't have an obligation to, I know we've done everything according to, you know, the strict definition of legal, but I also have been involved in enough situations where we've done that and then received, we've kicked the hornet's nest where we didn't even need to, because businesses get all up in arms, they don't feel like we paid enough attention to them. And I don't suspect that this is going to create a great deal of angst, and maybe some of you guys have had some conversations with the local business owners there about this. I'd like to know kind of your interpretation of what their, what their reaction to it is, that'd be helpful.
I can't speak to that.
Can you?
No, thank you.
My friend is at the deli, A&amp;M Deli, and he's said that there is nothing he needs to do before 6:00 a.m., and in fact, he closes at 6:00 p.m. So he said he is not interested in working more than a 12-hour day. So, and I know that the lovely ladies at the nail salon go home in their little van.
And you're intimately familiar with that whole spreadsheet you gave us, right, of the hours?
Yes, I have it right here.
There are no businesses that operate outside these hours as of the moment, correct?
No, oh, no.
And actually, I'd just like to comment on the hours with regard to the deli. There was a concern the planning boards decide that there may be some preparatory work needed in the businesses before opening at 6:00. If they're not opening and they're working inside preparing donuts or, that's not going to follow with these regulations.
That's not open, right.
They're just working inside.
Exactly. And he doesn't get major deliveries or any truck traffic.
Yeah, I don't see that as an issue at all with businesses.
That's kind of where the, you know, I have a lot of respect with planning commission, but they kind of like went off track there, you know.
We were there.
Considering those issues, it's just a little...
So...
Peter, did you have...
Peter Allen, 60 Broadway. I just want to make a point about, you know, people working before opening time. We used to have a bakery in the Old Village, but they don't have lights on, they don't have an impact, they're in the back, it's quiet. So just because they're not open, we don't want to see neon lights still on and lots of light and glare, even though they're not physically open. I think that's an important thing to remember.
Well, and again, that's an interesting point. One of the discussions that the applicant for the convenience store had was, well, if they had the pumps open all night, they'd want to have somebody in the store, and they might, they might close to customers between 1:00 and 6:00, or 5:00, or whatever, but there would still be somebody there all the time. And I thought that that was, it was a little troublesome listening to that explanation. It was almost a discussion of how they were going to propose something, but I was surprised they were describing how they were going to get around their own proposal. And I don't think, though, that this would be accommodating of that, of that kind of activity. It wouldn't make much sense between 8:00 in the evening and 6:00 in the morning to have people working inside a convenience store. There's nothing really to be working on.
May I ask you a quick question? Is there a particular use that you are concerned about in the wording that you were...
No, I just thought, well, I thought that any one of these uses, would you want to have an all-night laundromat?
No, but that's allowed, as you're saying right now.
Well, as an extent, that was from, I was reading from what Mike Testa had outlined as other uses that would be captured by this, you know, that something you might want. That actually is the only one that really caught my eye, and maybe that particular use is not problematic to be all night. But I think that in fairness to, to uses, it would just make more sense to have it as an across-the-board...
I agree with you that we should make it as airtight as we can. I'm just concerned about timing that we don't...
Well, I don't think timing is an issue, because I understand the reason we, one of the reasons we put this forward when we did is that once this is on the table, there's a section in the zoning code that essentially makes any proposal that contemplates something that's outside zoning that's currently on the table and has been advertised for public hearing and is currently being considered, is not allowed to be approved by any board.
It's like a moratorium on it.
It's kind of, yeah, sort of like a moratorium, exactly, by the way, the wording in the code is written. So we could discuss this for six months, and nothing's going to change with the convenience store, and I don't suggest that we do, I just want to get it right.
Okay, I agree with you.
All applications are held up.
Thank you.
I mean, you know, Almanjari, I think is going to turn over. I mean, there's, there's other thoughts that you need to, you need to be cognizant of that that business district is going to change.
And also, I'd like to throw, I would like our attorney to look carefully at Mike's observation or conjecture at the planning board, that the pumps and the gasoline service station facility is grandfathered for 24/7. If it's not operated 24/7, I don't see that it's grandfathered for 24/7. It hasn't operated for 24/7 for the last 12 months, I don't see it being a 24/7 grandfathered time on that particular aspect of the operation. And I think we need some clarity on that, because one of the other, one of the other things I heard from the applicant was the idea that the pumps may operate 24/7 even if the convenience store isn't open, and there would have to be some kind of...
Again, Steve, we need to be focused on what we're trying to do here, and not, it's...
It's one of those blue sets, I understand.
So another possibility per Patty's recent comment here is, is to take this in two steps, that is, to say, to enact this local law as it exists, and then to post a further element that would address some of those concerns.
I like that.
Because what we have here is simply adding an hours restriction to the existing language, and I think in the end, even if we were to capture some of the other things you just described, what we propose here wouldn't change.
Exactly my point, that's exactly my point. This is what we, this is the question we asked the attorney. In retail stores, as it existed, can we change, can we put a provision in for hours? And that's what we're doing.
I don't have an issue with it, except to say that, and I'm not on planning, nor am I on zoning, so I don't even know the degree of it. I do know that it was pointed out that the accessory use, there may be a loophole in this through the accessory use aspect of it, and...
But if we want to close that loophole, we need to close that with a different law.
We need to close that loophole anyway, no matter what.
I mean, we could, we could fold that into this, but we don't have on the table the language that would address that. So I'm somewhat inclined to proceed with this, and then to introduce...
And I don't have a problem, except to say, what is the, is there a rationale equally strong to get the language right the first time, and so it's not going to happen?
I mean, my point was, if I thought the language we have here, specific to A1, not to zoning code A1, but to A1 and section 185-20, were likely to change as a result of this review, then it doesn't make sense to pass it. I think that this language is going to remain the way it is, and if the issues that have just been described get captured, they will get captured in new text in addition to this text. So I'm not sure that, it doesn't make sense, as Patty suggested, to take it as two steps.
The only thing I would suggest is that if you close this, you close the moratorium.
There's no moratorium on the other items you just described.
Anyway, yeah. But we can announce the public, we could, we could announce a public hearing.
Well, I need to, I need to...
We have to have a resolution.
You have to circulate it to the planning commission. I mean, it's, you've got another 30, 45 days to go.
Our intention alone will not create a moratorium on that other...
Right. No, you have to have direct legislation.
And the odd thing is, and I, you know, if it's a sense of the board that we move ahead with this this evening and continue with some additional look afterwards is fine with me. I just wanted to, you know, to make, you know, to make that more salient point, that if we close this, it may be an interpretation thing, nothing may change, we may end up, if we did, didn't vote on it, might end up with the exact same language. If we end up with something very similar, Patty, it would require renoticing if some...
No, but this provision is...
If you had something less stringent than what you were recommending, let's say this, after some consideration of public comment and planning commission comment...
We change the hours.
Right, if you change it 6:00 to 9:00.
Right.
Yeah, 6:00 to 11:00, I'm sorry, make it more expansive. That would not require renoticing, but if you're adding another restriction under for permitted uses other than those listed here, you'd have, I would think you'd have to renotice it.
And I think we have to look into those things, but that doesn't, it's not going to affect this right now. We have to look into the accessory use issue. However, this is not going to change, no matter what we do.
I agree with that.
Yeah, so I don't see why we don't...
No, the only thing that would occur, you know, if you, you would renotice a proposed amendment that included this entire clause, plus a clause that affected accessory uses, that's what you'd be thinking. So this would not change.
I know, but we're not going to do something to, we're not changing this. We have to change another clause.
As I say, my personal opinion is we should go ahead and vote on this tonight as we have on our adjournment. Okay with that?
I agree.
Okay. Any further comment from anybody in the public hearing? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, public hearing is closed. We will now go to our resolutions, number 91, Steve.
Resolved, the board of trustees hereby appoints Lieutenant Richard Love to the position of provisional police chief effective May 31, 2011, in accordance with civil service law.
Is there a second?
Second.
A number of things to be said about this. The first is that, as many of you know, our longtime police chief, Anthony Charley, has announced his intention to retire at the end of May after 19 years, am I correct, of service?
As chief.
As chief, and 30...
31, I think 31 years.
31 years of service to the Village of Pleasantville Police Department. And as you know, we are engaged at the moment in an investigation, a wide-ranging investigation of a number of options for our police department, and the range of options includes everything from a remaining and independent police department, just exactly as we have right now, to remaining an independent police department with some element of shared services, to the potential of increased shared services with the Town of Pleasant, to the potential of consolidation of our police department with the Town of Pleasant Police Department, or the option of an intermunicipal agreement of the sort that was recently enacted by the Town of Osning to outsource police services on a contract basis to the Westchester County Department of Public Safety. So we're engaged in a very serious effort, both with the town and with the county, to understand what kind of services could be delivered and what it might all cost, and at the same time are also working with our own police department in order to run the best police department we possibly can. So with Tony's anticipated retirement, we need to appoint a provisional chief, and as Steve just indicated, we are happy tonight to appoint Lieutenant Richard Love. Richie has been a member of the Pleasantville Police Department since 1989. He was a police officer in the City of New York from '85 to '89, served here as a police officer from 1989 to '97, and in 1997 was promoted to sergeant, which position he occupied until 2006, when he was promoted to lieutenant, and in 2007 promoted to police detective lieutenant, which position he has served since 2011 to the present. So Richie will become our provisional police chief. There is a civil service process by which a permanent police chief needs to be selected and chosen. That's an extended process, which involves test-taking and interviewing canvassed off the civil service list, so that would be a long process yet to come. So in the interim, the provisional police chief proposed tonight is Lieutenant Richard Love. We look forward to working with him, not only in managing the department through this transition, but also in managing the department as we go through the process of investigating what our police service alternatives may be, and to be able to come back to the community with a pretty detailed report about what it costs to provide police services and what options we have, so that we can arrive at the confidence that we are doing the right thing. So we certainly will count on Richie Love in his role as provisional police chief to be a leader in that regard, just as we will be engaging all of you, as well as the members of the board and the police officers themselves in pursuing all of our options, so. Can you take a vote?
Well, I think you should also mention that Lieutenant Love just finished a 16-week course at Quantico.
Yes, he's a recent graduate of the FBI National Academy, just back a few weeks ago from a three-month, quite intensive program with high-ranking police from around the country and indeed around the world, so. All in favor of resolution number 91?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved.
Congratulations, Lieutenant, Chief Love, I guess.
Chief Love.
Chief Love.
Effective at, at, really, chief. Charlie's retirement, May 31.
Right, May 31.
Number 92.
Resolved, the pre-check register dated May 9, 2011, covering check numbers 69214 through 69351, has been reviewed and they are hereby approved as listed below. The general fund, $130,250.91. Miscellaneous revenue fund, $12,691.12. The water fund, $22,972.89. The capital fund, $22,349.04. The refuge fund, $4,208.13. The pool fund, $4,950. And the trust and agency fund for $4,152.50, for a total of $201,574.59.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections?
Oh, I had one. Are water meters, Patty, 20, are these new water meters or maintenance on water meters or...
I don't know the reference, but I believe you're looking at a large purchase.
Yes.
Meters, the replacement for water meters that are, I guess there are frequent meters we need for radio reading. These are going to replace...
These are household meters.
Yeah, they're going to be replacing meters in most of the districts and the town outside. Most of the village residents have the new meters in, but in some of our districts that we serve, we don't have those, so this will be an ongoing effort to replace.
Okay.
Patty, was...
Thank you.
We budgeted those for next year? There was money in this year's budget for them as well?
Yes, both years, yes. We have a lot of work to do. I think Steve said about $50,000 to $60,000 worth of meters need to be purchased.
And when those are completed, just for the interest of those watching, it allows us to read the meters without actually going up to the house, so they can be taken as a, as a radio transmission, so. And then it's also worth noting that we've added a resolution that wasn't on our original agenda, number 108, which we'll get to at the end, which is an additional pre-check register referring to the checks that were required for today's closing of the Lee Park property. So all in favor of number 92?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan.
Resolved, the board of trustees hereby reviewed the minutes of the meeting on Monday, May, April 25, 2011, and hereby approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or corrections?
This close.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved, Steve, 94.
Resolved, the board of trustees hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign a multimodal capital program grant with New York State Department of Transportation. Said grant in the amount of $50,000 shall be used for Mandrell Road pedestrian improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Patty, you want to describe this, including the critical distinction of multimodal versus intermodal?
No, I don't know if I want to get into the battle of intermodal, multimodal, but this is a grant that I received with the assistance of former Assemblyman Richard Brodsky, and we are able to use this $50,000 as a reimbursement, on a reimbursement basis for improvements that we intend to do along Mandrell Road from Wheeler to Tompkins. It would include bumping out the corners of certain intersections at Wheeler and Washington, and at Tompkins, and Manville. In order to narrow the distance of the crosswalks, because at these stretches along Manville Road, it's a very wide, a very wide roadway, we also intend to put in some sort of pedestrian island, so people can have an opportunity to cross a little, a little less distance from one side of Manville Road to the other, particularly in the vicinity of Jacob Burns and the vicinity of the railroad station. So, you know, we're fortunate to get this. It's a nice opportunity, these are pedestrian enhancements that will help people get across Manville Road, particularly at its widest points.
And we thank, after the fact, Assemblyman Brodsky for... And we thank, after the fact, Assemblyman Brodsky for having assisted in achieving this for us. Any further comments?
This doesn't include the proposed improvement that was circulated at our last meeting in the one before, around the Evergreen Island, further up Manville?
No. No, this is construction only. So you're, no, we don't really have a plan for the other section of Manville Road at this point in time. It was too far out of central business to include that. This had to be related to transportation.
I saw it drawn at the intersection. I wasn't comfortable with it. That's why I raised it. If this is strictly down around Wheeler, the Tompkins, that's fine.
Okay. All in favor, number 94.
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Number 95, Mindy.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village administrator to sign the joint facilities use agreement with the Pleasantville School District.
Is there a second?
Aye.
This is an update of, an agreement that Mindy can speak to, Mindy and Mike Ilfeather spearheaded originally, and then Jonathan picked up from it.
Jonathan tagged along. This is a, an update of an agreement that we had with the Pleasantville Union Free School District that was 48 or 49 years old, and it needed to be really tapped out again. And I originally started working on this a number of years ago with Mike Ilfeather, and who's obviously not on the board anymore, and Bill Alton from the school board, who's not on the school board anymore, and Tom Exton. And then when Mike and Bill Alton left, Jonathan picked up where Mike left off, and so did Shane McGaffey. But it's a very important agreement in the respect that it just really draws the lines of, that it's a, it's a, it's a great agreement for everybody that lives in the school district and the Village of Pleasantville to, to share services in our, in our community, and share fields, and share buildings, and, and that's one thing that, you know, I think, I'm very proud that we got, we ironed this out, because there was definitely a lot of, a lot of issues who stripes the fields for what, and, and we worked very hard into late hours every, a couple of times that we really had to put it, put it all down there. But there's just, there is one change to the agreement that we just have to specify, that, that the light, we don't light the fields anymore in the month of November. So any, I talked to Patty about that.
And what page is that?
So that just has to be amended. That is on page one of the agreement.
Right, at the bottom.
At the bottom, that the, it's a priority scheduling of the fields. But this, this agreement also includes the field house, which is on the Village of Pleasantville property, and it is a village property that we lease to the school district for $1 a year. They have to abide by all of the codes and, and permit. We don't charge them for the permits. However, they do lease those premises from us for $1 a year. The idea of this whole agreement was, obviously, to share services, but to have no money exchanged hands. It was kind of silly there for a while, that, you know, all right, you use this, and you give us this amount of money, and it just didn't make a lot of sense. So this is a great agreement that just really outlines everything, and it benefits everybody in the community, I think, so.
So is that modification clear?
For Patty, it's clear, yeah.
Okay. And that's not changing the terms that the school district understood?
No, it's just going to-
No, but it's something that we've incorporated into our budget the last budget cycle, because it's very costly for us to turn the lights on at Parkway Field. There's a, every time you turn the lights on, it's, I won't even begin to tell you how much money it is, but it's ridiculous. And we made the, nobody was paying for those lights, except for the Village of Pleasantville, so we decided that the lights will not be turned on, and this is also out of respect for the neighbors there also. The, we will not turn the lights on, starting in May, the lights can go on through October. But really, our idea is, we need to rest the fields anyway in November. Our DPW goes through a lot to get our fields into shape, and we, we don't like anyone on the fields as of the first weekend in November. So if there's no lights, it's pretty dark, they won't go on the fields, so saves everybody money all the way around. So that's, that's what we're adding in there, that any lights that would go on in November, that people would have to pay the cost for that. It's about $2,000 every time you turn the lights on. That's what it is.
Or the first time in the month.
Yeah.
And then cheaper the later months, later times in the same month. Is it on-
Yeah, and then there's a usage charge every time you turn them on. But once you turn them on for that month, you get hit with two, two or $3,000, I think.
It runs, it's over $2,000 in a demand charge, on a monthly basis.
And then every time you turn them on, it's like $500.
And then there's a consumption charge, right.
So if you use them for one night, it's $500. You have it on a timer, and it's supposed to turn off at a certain time, but the neighbors around there often call us and say something's wrong with the timer, the lights are on, it's midnight, and it's just not fair to them.
Okay. So, and again, thanks to all the board members passed and present on this board and on the school board who worked through this, and good news to have it all come fine. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved. Jonathan, 96.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees, the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bid for a sanitation truck.
Is there a second?
Second.
Self-explanatory, we've been through an extended discussion over the last year and a half about our sanitation services, and believe we have arrived at a circumstance where we can run our sanitation division with fewer people than we had before. And assuming that can be achieved, we've made, make this proposal to advertise the bid for sanitation truck, because we are going to need to replace, in the end, both of our garbage trucks.
I have only one request that doesn't necessarily have to be blessed by addition to the resolution, but can we check, just humor me, and let's check the used garbage truck market?
Sure.
And make sure that there's nothing, no little gems out there that, I know Steve is very particular about his trucks, but one of the reasons that-
Generally used, only driven to church on Sunday?
If possible. But no, we had this discussion, fairly lengthy discussion, as part of our budget determination, and given that-
The municipality that's going on.
Part of what we're doing with our sanitation department, it may be a little rough to describe it as an experiment, but certainly we are changing the way, we're going to try to operate that department in an effort to keep that department here as part of the village. Buying a brand-new truck is certainly a huge expense, and I've been assured that there is a used market in case we decide to go another direction in a year or two. So to that, you know, to that degree, if there is indeed that, that degree of used market access out there, then at least let's check it.
Okay. You can't go to state bid on that, right? There's no state bid.
Well, not in a used market, but you know, there are ways to specify through the bidding process, certified used as well.
Certified used.
Well, and the last thing, Patty, and I think it may be too, a little ahead of the curve, but I think I floated to you and Steve a ways back, New York City had put out a spec for hybrid garbage trucks, which I think we're still in kind of an experimental zone at that point, but obviously would be a great thing if, if hybrid garbage trucks have arrived to the point where they're a reliable option.
Oh, I know, particularly with-
Well, they might, they-
They crawl up and down the streets. I mean, they just-
Right, so they're expensive though.
I do think that, that, if I recall that article correctly, they weren't a production
model yet, but it's worth just double checking it.
Okay.
Oh, there's grant money, so let's make sure we check-
Just like to add to Jonathan's request, other than looking on eBay for used garbage trucks, there's probably, you know, at the state level, some clearinghouse for used vehicles, and also there are cities within this state which are shrinking dramatically, like the city of Buffalo. And when you've got 10,000 or 20,000 properties that you're going to demo because there's nobody living in them any longer, there's a very good possibility in cutting back on services in some of these more needy areas of the state, they may actually have, that might be a good place to look.
Going at a business sale. Municipalities that have gone default.
You know, it might be a good place to check. You've got Buffalo, you've got Rochester, you've got Plattsburgh, they're all cities that are struggling and maybe downsizing. That might be a good place to make a few phone calls.
All right. All good points. All in favor, number 96.
Aye.
Motion approved, 97, Steve.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to advertise for bid for demolition and grading of a former lane property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, harking back to my comments earlier, we closed today on the lane plumbing property. It's our intention to demolish the buildings there and grade the property to a flat condition and then establish a parking lot. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, number 98.
Authorization to notice a public hearing amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic Section 173-52, One-Way Streets. Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, May 23, 2011, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, to hear comments as it pertains to a local law amending Chapter 173, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 173-52, One-Way Streets, as follows. To add on Parkway Terrace, direction going north to west, how do you do that? No, I think that's just one direction, northwest. It limits from Manville Road to Bedford Road. Yeah, so that is just one direction. It was just, it was just west. Isn't that right?
I want to say that, I want to say that-
Sort of a northwest direction.
Northwest direction.
Yeah, whatever. Close enough. It's from Manville-
To Bedford.
That's what you need to know. From Manville to Bedford.
I think it, it's south, isn't it?
I didn't, I didn't think it was either the above.
Yeah, it might, it's more south than this.
In any event, it goes from, it goes from Manville Road to Bedford.
How about this?
That's how we end up here in midnight.
Can we, can we strike the direction of travel?
Yeah.
The, the public hearing is, to establish Parkway Terrace is, would be one way from Manville to Bedford.
That's right. That's good.
Okay. Do we have a second on that? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Jonathan.
Jonathan.
Jonathan, number 99.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing for Monday, June 13, 2011, 8:00 p.m. prevailing time, to hear comments as it pertains to local law amending Chapter 151, Solid Waste, Section 151-15. Formula for determining unit charges as follows. Section 1, amending Section 151-15 formula for determining unit charges. We're going to delete Item C, condominium, fee simple townhouse or apartment with individual garbage cans at each dwelling unit to one unit, which constitutes one unit, and Section D, condominium, fee simple townhouse or apartments with common garbage containers for three or more dwelling units, or with garbage cans for three or more condominiums or apartments at a common location constituting three quarters of a unit per dwelling unit. And we're going to add, in replacement of Section C, a new Section C, condominium, fee simple townhouses and apartments will be viewed as one unit.
Is there a second?
Second.
So, as mentioned, there'd be a public hearing on Monday, the 13th of June, at 8:00 p.m. to discuss that, essentially treating all condominiums and fee simple townhouses and apartments in, in the same manner, regardless of where the garbage is picked up, as one unit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, Steve, 108.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby authorizes the village clerk to notice a public hearing regarding submission of a community development block grant application for Cooley Street public improvements.
Is there a second?
Second.
Want to describe that, Patty?
Mayor, the consortium agreement requires that we have a public hearing on anything we submit for federal funds, and we are considering submitting a grant application to extend the water mains and sewer mains and drainage systems at Cooley Street, the portion of Cooley Street that runs from Bedford Road to Manville Road, with the intention of opening up that road in the near future for, through traffic.
Which ties back to our discussion of the lane plumbing property, et cetera.
CDBG grants still give me-
He said it right.
He did.
I know, because I looked at the community development block.
You've had a lot of practice.
I guess you got confused with CDBG, but that's all.
The ambiguity contained in those contracts still give me a reason to have a concern.
Lose sleep at night.
Well.
I don't lose sleep at night over, but I certainly have concern over jumping in and putting a whole ton of these on our balance sheet.
I don't think it's so much a balance sheet issue. The question is that-
Well, you know, I said they're part of the community, I mean, they're part of our responsibility to-
Well, we, we still need to, you know, if we intend to submit a grant, we have to do it by June 1. We only have one opportunity for a public hearing on that application, which is next board meeting. So at that point, you can decide whether or not you want to participate, but I think we should at least put the issue out for people.
I agree. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 101.
Me, right?
Yes.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the following budget amendment, to increase revenue and expenses for PCTV in the amount of $2,224 from franchise PEG to PCTV, PEG-PCTV contractual, and to fund over-budget accounts, as stated in the record, a total of $10,449. We're just moving money from one account to another.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, Jonathan, 2.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Captain Lawrence Brewing Company at 99 Cassington Street in Pleasantville to serve alcoholic beverages in the parking lot of the brewery building on May 14, 2011, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., in conjunction with their fifth-year anniversary party. Said approval is subject to receipt of insurance certificates and a copy of their liquor license permit.
Is there a second?
Second.
Congratulations to Captain Lawrence on their fifth anniversary. It's been a great anchor piece of the Pleasantville Light Industrial District there, and-
Not to mention the Pleasantville Music Festival.
And this will be the, I guess, fifth time that Scott has, Scott McCarrow, the owner, has held this event on their parking lot, and it's always been a happy and well-controlled time. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 103.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees, in accordance with village law, hereby certifies the attached unpaid water rents, and here, further authorizes the village treasurer to levy said unpaid water rents to the 2011, 2012 tax roll.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a modest list of people or businesses that are in arrears on their water bills, and we roll that over to their tax bills, and we encourage everybody to catch up and become current. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion approved, 2104.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville, in accordance with real property tax law, Section 1420, is authorized to levy the property tax for the ensuing fiscal year, and be it further resolved, the taxes shall be levied pursuant to the execution of the tax warrant by the mayor, as heretofore attached, by which the village treasurer shall be commanded-
Wow.
-to receive and collect all taxes extended-
Queen's English.
I know. Upon the 2011, 2012 tax roll, I think those were taken out of the royal vows as well. Further resolved, pursuant to real property tax law, Section 1434, the village treasurer shall collect taxes in two equal installments at the tax receiver's office on the third floor of Village Hall, 80 Wheeler Avenue, from 8:30 a.m. until 4:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, with the first installment due June 1, 2011, to and including July 1, 2011, and the second installment due December 1, 2011, to and including December 31, 2011. And be it further resolved, that the payment of the second installment can be accepted in advance of December 1, 2011.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you for your reading of that grand resolution in such denitorian tones.
I swear.
The takeaway being, as usual, your taxes are due in two installments, one in June and one in December.
And we'll take them early.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees of the Village of Pleasantville hereby authorizes the village treasurer to close Capital Account Bedford Road/Rozelle, number H5197.201.09480. The account has a zero balance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Highly controversial move on our part. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Steve, number 106.
Resolved, the Board of Trustees hereby approves a local law amending Chapter 185, Section 185-20, central business A2 district, as follows. Section 1, as exists, amending Section 185-20, central business A2 district. And to add, again, to the existing Sub-C, permitted principal uses, a structure building may be erected, altered, deranged, designed, or used, and a lot premises may be used for any of the following purposes, and no others. Sub-1, retail stores and banks, bakeries, delicatessens, and ice cream parlors with a maximum of eight seats for customer use. The added language would be, provided their hours of operation are no earlier than 6:00 a.m. and no later than 10:00 p.m.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further comment on this?
I, I, I just want to make a part of the record.
I, I, I just want to make a part of the record. One, I'd like to note that no businesses showed up tonight to challenge this. Secondly, I've been informed that this has been circulated to the businesses through our chamber.
Someone made that representation.
It has, yes.
And third-
That is, I received the email and saw many, many others on it.
Okay. And third, I asked the people here, the neighbors here, if they had chatted with the businesses. They have, they have, I got a positive response, it's that many of had been chatted with, and did not seem to demonstrate an objection to this. So, having said that, you know, and by the fact that none showed for this meeting, I infer that that's, you know, basically a tacit acceptance of, from their part, on this law as well.
You should also add that we are going to ask for counsel on the additional areas that we stated previously.
Okay.
All right, all in favor of one, number one oh six?
Aye.
I motion approve, one oh seven.
Result, the board of trustees of the village of Pleasantville hereby approves the request from Guyon Street residents to hold a block party on Saturday, June fourth, two thousand eleven, from three to eight p.m.
Is there a second?
Second. Oh, I can't second myself.
Second.
Guyon Street, long list of people going to have a good time.
A lot of block parties early this year.
Yes. All in favor? Aye. Mindy?
Aye.
Can you double dip?
Motion approved.
Can we swing back and have one later, too?
Resolution one oh eight.
A newly added resolution, one Peter referred to earlier, resolve that the free check register dated May ninth, two thousand eleven, covering check numbers six nine three fifty-two to six nine three fifty-eight have been reviewed, and they are hereby approved. It's listed below, amounting to the capital fund of nine hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and two dollars and sixty-two cents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Again, this refers to the checks written today at the closing for the lame property, as well as a couple of other things that were ready to be paid and were added after the original check registering was written. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is this the same wine tub as?
No, not related.
What a shame.
All right, that was the last of our resolutions. I am reminded what I forgot and should have mentioned at the outset, and that is a week from this past Saturday, Saturday, May fourteenth, that's next Saturday, this coming Saturday is Pleasantville Day, so.
Ah, how could you forget that?
I don't know, I forgot, there were too many other things to talk about.
Terrible.
So, Pleasantville Day is this Saturday, May fourteenth, it kicks off as usual with, there's a five K and a fun run, that's a scholarship fund project, the applied to service project group at the Presbyterian Church has a pancake breakfast at the Presbyterian Church, and then Ginny Brentano and her crew, again, have organized the festivities down at Memorial Plaza for Saturday, May fourteenth. Hopefully, the sun will come out.
It will, we'll send out a web blast tomorrow.
Last I looked, it looked like there was a little bit of risk there, but-
Oh, it's fine, this is Pleasantville.
It'll be a good time either way, so. This coming Saturday, May fourteenth is Pleasantville Day, and thank you for reminding me of that.
Yeah.
Any further comments?
I just, you know, I mentioned in the, I'm sorry, in the beginning of the meeting, I'll be very brief, about the park that was built at Rozelle, and I really didn't give enough credit to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, that worked very hard on, because that equipment and that, and Patty, you as well, to-
I'm so happy to get that grant, whatever, it was a nightmare.
That grant was a real pain in the neck to get, and you worked very hard on it, and the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board also worked very hard with the community representatives, and I didn't need to forget the two of you in the thank you.
And add to that, Mary, I'll say so to our Parks Foreman, Brendan Gallagher-
Oh, he was unbelievable, the village staff that day was unbelievable.
A couple of the parents who were involved in, in the undertaking said they hadn't realized how much support they get the village in, so it was, you know, a great opportunity for everybody to be helping, so thank you for that reminder. All right, there being no further business, is there a motion to adjourn?
So.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much, good night. We look forward to seeing you at Pleasantville Day this coming Saturday, and at our next regular meeting, which is on Monday, May twenty-third. Thank you, good night.
Thank you.